Last week I submitted a letter of intent for the NNC DPS Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program. That's the BRIC program. That is for non-emergency, non-flood, immediate flood-related things. It's to do improvements to the system to prevent future flooding and future issues. The project that I submitted will go against some of the things we said today about starting at the river and working up because I submitted the LOI for Bonnet's Creek Phase One, breaking it down. And I chose that because number one, it's the area that goes under the hospital. And when you talk about cost-benefit analysis, we should score very highly in that category being that the system currently goes under the hospital. So that was submitted last week. We should hear if within the next month whether they're going to accept it and ask us to actually submit an application. The other thing that I'm going to be doing in the next couple of months is submitting a grant through Golden Leaf. Golden Leaf has their submissions every other month. The next one is due December 20-something, and then after that it would be February. I don't know if I'm going to be able to make it December 1 only because I have to file the closeout paperwork on this grant before I can put in for that grant. So I don't know if I'll have the time to get them both in. For that project, it is, they have a $1 million maximum that we can ask for. So basically, I went through the list and looked. The highest priority that was in a good range for us was the number one priority, the North Fodale system improvements at 1.4 million. So I'm going to be submitting the grant for that for 1 million. When we got the original grant, they pretty, not that they said we guarantee we'll give you money for future stuff, but as Tom said, being that they've already invested in the city with this planning, you know, the mapping and everything like that, they're very likely to give us the money for that. So that, and that project will install drains where there are none now, on North Fodale from Leonard to Nash, and then running down Nash from Fodale to Herring, and then down Herring to a ditch slash creek that runs through there. And going forward, we'll be submitting for additional grants as we see them. We have a list of them that were included in the report, and we're going to try to match up what can go into what categories for that. On the maintenance side, working with Tom Stanley in Public Works, working on some stuff for his guys to go out and do routine cleanings. The GIS mapping that we're going to be getting from WK Dixon will allow them in the field to actually go right into that map and say, "We cleaned this catch basin on this date. We cleaned this section of pipe on this date. It was full, it was whatever." So all that will be stored in one location on this, on this map. That'll help a lot. And also through what we have on the maps, Tom has already done four or five little projects to relieve drainage in areas. So that's the end. Now, more questions?
Do we own or maintain the ditch slash creek at the end of Herring where that first project was dumping?
It is not within any easements. It is a stream. It flows water a lot of the time, so. Any other questions? Not hearing any. Thank you much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Brian is going to be doing a FEMA update, and by that he means from Tropical Storm 8.
Like the mayor said, I am here to do a quick update for you guys. Shouldn't take very long. So just to fill everybody, I'm sure everybody knows there was a federal declaration that was announced on the 19th. We originally submitted a total of 1 million and some change with physical damages. Once that, that federal declaration was officially declared, we have to go back into the grant portal and submit an RPA. So an RPA is just a general submission that says we are going to officially ask for some type of public assistance for projects, all right? It just lets them know there's, there's projects coming. The date to have that submitted was the, the end date was the 18th of this month coming up, but we're already submitted. We have not submitted for any projects as of yet. And as I go through the slides, you'll sort of see why. We can't submit for anything unless we spend money for, for something. The only thing that we've technically spent money for so far is the, is for the overtime, the payroll considerations, and for some of the fire department things that, that we've done, but we'll go through that here shortly. The detail of the submitted damages for the assistance, so the fire department side, we had a building leak for approximately $4,000. So this has to submit to our insurance company first, and whatever the insurance company doesn't pay, the doctor or whatever, then we would submit to FEMA for that reimbursement. The required maintenance of 14 vehicles that were in water above their axles, we submitted originally in form of 39,200. Once again, this is where we have to submit to our insurance first, and whatever the insurance doesn't pay, deducts the WIs and stuff, we would submit to FEMA. Insurance came out, and actually, they went ahead and we have an awesome insurance company. They already provided us a check for approximately $5,000 to go ahead and get that work completed. We're currently still working on that, going through all the, all the trucks. Some of the trucks we were able to run through the city garage, some of the trucks we are not able to run through the city garage due to the fact that we have to deal with the manufacturer's warranties and things of that nature. It has to be done at, at their business or at their service center. The repair, repair or replacement of 360-point tower, okay? Currently, our tower is in Rockaway, North Carolina, where it's being assessed by the manufacturer. The last update that we had from the manufacturer was a possibly may want to ship it beside the boat to get some further evaluation done, possible repairs. They have not officially totaled it out there. So there's nothing that I can submit on that until we know for parts and rack. So the building's older than 45 years old, so FEMA has rescinded their offer to assist us in that, but we're still going to go down the, the path of the insurance company and still try to get that work at least be done in the kitchen and the floors and things of that nature. We are still able to submit for replacement of the three desktop computers for FEMA. I'll be working with Heather to try to get that figured out when she's ready to, to purchase those. Public utilities, all right? So we originally put in and got the approval, the non-formal approval of the $84,532 to do a full inspection and cleaning of what you guys just got done, listening to all those lines. The budget amendment has been made and it's ready. Noah has it. I believe it's going to happen on the 14th for the board's approval. Once that's done, Todd or Tom then will go ahead and do that project, and then we'll submit that project back to FEMA. The goal is, not the goal, but we're sure that we're probably going to find some, some issues when we do guys do those inspections. We've already found some issues. Tom has already went through and had his, his guys look in with our camera systems to, to see some things. Once we see those, those issues, then we're going to go ahead and file for some special projects under that main project for repair. And then that's when we start looking into, you know, this, this bigger project of fixing all those, those issues. On the general side, so the extra labor for stormwater protection, we roughly had $327,000 in costs. There, there's also money in there that I believe is going to change a little bit because we, we sort of calculated it out further for the police traffic control that we needed, and they were able to, to cut that a little bit shorter. I'm working with Lance and Joey in finance FEMA, and there'll be some that we have to work with ourselves. So we'll be getting that already out because this is one of the things I've already spent the money on. Individual assistance, so that declaration was declared by the 18th for the individuals, for the, for the residents and for the small businesses. It went out, there was a bunch of, I think we also had it on our social media, the county did, and everything about the outreach center that was at Concreed Community Building in Winnebago. These were the hours from when I originally made the, the slide, but it is actually closed as of last Friday, permanently closed. I did speak with a few people that I know that did go out there and applied for the loans and...
When you say it's closed, it's the facility's closed, not, they have 180 days to make the application?
Correct, correct. The facility's closed. Correct. I, I did speak with a few people that actually went out there that went through the whole process of trying to get the SBA loan, and then also just trying to get the, from state funding, and they did get the SBA loan. A lot of, pretty much everybody that I spoke with got denied on the SBA loan. So therefore, we're through the process now of just trying to get the, the state money. So they're working through that. But I haven't heard anything from any businesses or anything like that, anybody submitting paperwork for any of that on their side for the economic side, impact or anything like that. I'd be curious if anybody has yet.
We can have an offline conversation back there.
This just goes over the second one, the, from the original slide deck, but that's all I have. Anybody's got any questions?
This is an excellent board that organized, you know, they're very easy to understand. Excellent work.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board?
So what is the total amount we've submitted for reimbursement from FEMA?
We haven't submitted anything as of yet.
But will submit.
As soon as the budget amendment's done and that work is completed, we'll officially submit for the $84,532, and we'll be officially submitting for the $327,099 roughly here shortly. We just have to rework those numbers because those were, some of that was thought to be, you know, we came up with that number based off of, actually of November 1 being the, the deadline, but we know that we were able to not use as many overtime hours for police because the bridge is opened up earlier. And I don't think we had to use the Monroe Police Department as much as we thought.
I think we got the $500,000 for the ladder, the truck.
So the truck hasn't been, hasn't been deemed yet from the manufacturer a total loss, or we have no repair costs? They're, they're still trying to figure that out right now. That's, that's possibly why they'll have to ship it to South Dakota?
So ballpark between 4 and 450,000.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Agenda item number five, Board Retreat Budget Calendar. Okay, so we're getting through lunch, so let me get going here. Alderman Retreat and Preliminary Budget Calendar. We request to schedule a retreat in January, give you an opportunity to clarify future visions, strategies, and goals, and give the staff guidance on the new budget. The retreat will also give time for the department heads to present their ideas. I want us, we have started this year earlier. We started in October, and we're targeting a completion date of April 30. You'll see the budget calendar at the last page of your packet. So we've already begun. Finance is already starting a long-range forecast. I watched the, last spring, the budget discussions, and I heard about with the, with the merger, water sewer merger, the impact that will, that will, has caused on the budget. So we're getting a long lead time on that. Finance is always, is already performing a long-range cash flow to bring to you at the retreat a clear understanding of the financial position, forecasting revenues and expenses. So we're not backfilling it. We'll have an idea of where we stand now, and then we can figure out how the tax rate will fit into ongoing operating expenses. All these capital items clearly need to be in that model, and the grants that he's pursuing. By the way, having done this before, that, the work they're doing with the GIS map and all that modeling is 50% of getting the grant. Once they have that data, they know exactly what they can award. So we're, this is critical. What they've done is moved us forward significantly by getting us that map and the GIS data. Then you go to the grantors and you say, "We've mapped it. We know the problems. We know the choke points. We, give us the money and we'll phase it in." And they want to help us because they don't want repetitive flooding. So what they've done already is set the stage for significant grant funds. I can't predict when, but to start materializing. But we're going to get a, a long lead run-up on that. Now, I sent, I sent out a budget direction to the department heads. I said, "Just submit to me a status quo budget this year. We don't need any significant staff increases. We want to get a feel for how the merger's going to play out and these other capital costs." So nothing, you know, unless you have something really justifiable, let's go, let's start with the status quo, and then we'll go from there, okay? So I give you this budget update because it factors into the retreat, because the retreat will be significantly affected by the budget and the budget schedule. For the retreat, we have four options. The community building, the Indian Trail, four casual, which is $10 per person, the cooperative extension in Bolivia, which is free. Now, for your front, the community building and Indian Trail would allow the meetings to be live streamed and recorded. The other locations would not have the capability and would rely on the clerk's official meeting minutes. So that is significant information for you, I believe. What I, what we request today, we need to choose a location. As we say, this will fit in with the budget calendar and the overall spring calendar that Noah's working on. So we need to go ahead and decide on a location, and then we need to know the time needed for the in-depth discussion. Now, you saw there, we had two, almost two hours on parking alone and a good hour on stormwater. So my advice is give yourself enough time to have in-depth discussion that we can get this all sorted out. Really, we need two days. I guess we could reduce it to a day and a half. The minimum is one full day, in my opinion. Saturday may or may not be an option. This is your choice. Once the location is determined, we will look at the calendar and set dates. The clerk will bring back those dates as part of the final budget calendar, included in the overall meeting calendar that you'll adopt in December, okay? So for today, I think we need to just make a decision on where you want the retreat and the duration of the retreat. Thank you.
Are you taking comments right now?
It's your, it's your decision to make. I'll take as many comments as you like.
Okay. For us to go off-site is the opposite of transparency because, as you have stated, going off-site allows us to talk freely without the distractions of the public with us, and that really is the opposite of transparency. And going back to 2016, I attended these retreats. I mean, retreats are not a new concept for us. We've had one every year, and they have usually been moderated by an outside person who is trained in how to do this. One of the ones who did it most frequently, if I remember correctly...
Chris May.
Chris May, who was extremely talented, great expertise, and actually, we were so impressed with him that we made him our interim city manager during a period when we did not have a city manager. We gave him a nice gift at the end, remember? We were so impressed. But the fact is, we simply cannot go somewhere where it is extremely inconvenient or impossible for the public to come with us. And it also, to go anywhere other than here or Indian Trail, probably this would be it. Either one of those, however, that's where people at home can tune in, or if they're busy, they're at work or whatever, they can go to it later and look at the recorded version. I mean, transparency is we do things where the public can see it happening.
Would you like to do it here or at Indian Trail?
That's the dealer's choice. I don't care. I, I think that it may be more comfortable at Indian Trail. It's smaller, but the public will come. Some will, like me, and I used to, but it was only a few people who came. But back then, we weren't recording. Since we're going to record, I think many people will tune in, either live or look at the recorded version. And I remember, long before he was elected, an alderman, Rich Alt showed up for at least one of our retreats. Do you remember that?
No.
Okay, I figured you would. I'm fine with more than one day. I do believe that we've got a pileup of business to take care of. I hope that we will have a moderator who will help us get through all of this, but either here or community building. A lot of, I think, can help us pick.
Well, we have to get directions, so do you think a motion?
I think a motion that we stay in Southport for our retreat, that we also, I guess we need to break this into multiple motions. First, that the retreat be held in Southport at either Indian Trail Meeting Hall or the community building, whichever is available and will be most conducive for discussion and public observation.
Is there, second, there's a motion and a second. Now, there's discussion. Hold it, must hold it.
I would lobby for Indian Trail just because it's not this cavernous place for us to have a retreat, so I would lobby for that. The other thing I would like to ask is, and I don't know the timing of everything, and you have probably a better understanding of that, but the idea of having a whole day meeting, I'd rather see us have short, shorter, you know, three or four-hour meetings than a whole day, you know, have three or four of those meetings at, or whatever is needed than a whole day to be more productive. From your lips to God's ears.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I'll take the tuna fish on white. All right, we actually have a couple people actually work for a living, so when we get down to working on the hours, we'll, we'll work that part of it out. But there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second, to have it in the city in one of two locations. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
So three to, three to four days, three hours?
Three to four hours a day, something like that?
Just something that's, that way we can stay more clear-headed about it, I think.
And we have people who have kids, and they have to take out kids, and they have to do all, all those things of life that old people like us don't have to worry about.
And I'm okay with, with Saturday, if Saturday works for anybody I know, no, he's shaking, never mind.
Saturday's harder. The kids are at least in school during the day, during the week.
Okay.
So if they go back to school the 2nd of January, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong.
Please don't, please don't.
Okay, so I think that, that the 7th, 8th, 9th, we're back in sometime in there.
Yeah, and then, yeah, so morning would be about to meet.
For the scheduling, I would like to keep it in between our Monday and Thursday, that first Monday and the second Thursday. Anything that you put in between those dates, I'm genuinely blocking out. But once you get outside of that, that's where I try to make my own line. If you're inside, the first Monday to second Thursday, then we're obligated to. You got me?
Four consecutive days, Monday to Thursday?
Um, yeah, that'd be fine, mornings or whatever. But again, in between those periods where we're required to be here that Monday and that Thursday.
Oh, for regular needs.
Yes, sir. Just to, just put us in between those. Don't put it outside if there's...
So for January, that'll make us 6, 7, 8, and 9.
6, 7, 8, 9 would be about right.
And then the 9th is our third regular Thursday meeting.
Yeah, that...
And the 6th is our regular Monday meeting.
Could it be the next week mark? Only because everything's early in January, we're doing the 6th. That way we'll have time to prepare for the 9th meeting and that sort of thing, the week of the 13th.
Okay, that is, those are one of those, one of those where we have on the same week. Okay. We can stretch a little bit with that, I understand what you said earlier. There are some of these where we have 10 days, and this one was just a 10-day meeting. So that one, I'm good with going a little bit inside or outside of those dates, but not into the 20 of the 20 at the end of that count.
The earlier, the better. Did you capture that, Noah? You're clear with what they're asking? Noah will, now that we've got a location and a duration, he will finalize the exact dates, okay? All right, good?
Will you, will you give us a heads up on that to let us get back to you and say, "Uh-oh, you know, that, that day's not going to work?"
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back and I'll verify the calendar of Indian Trail and make sure those dates work, and I'll let you know ahead of the December meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Government making decisions and moving on. All right, let's move on. Manager's report. Mayor, can I go ahead while I'm up here?
You may.
All right. Manager's report for November 4, PTC 8 Recovery. Mr. Brian Colloff did an excellent job on... Mr. Brian Koloff did an excellent job on the FEMA reimbursements. Those are underway. Downtown businesses, we, we're concerned about y'all. Recent events such as the weekend's wooden boat show and Holly, Holly Day's arts and craft show are bringing folks back downtown. I've watched the traffic flow. Talked to some business owners, talked to them during the bridge closure. I think we're seeing a return of business downtown. If businesses need additional SBA economic injury disaster loan applications are on the website, if they need that support, you can contact our office, and we'll, we can help you with that, although the county is coordinating a lot of that and actually set up a site at one point. We are moving on the path to FEMA funds for our storm drainage system, as Mr. Koloff just mentioned, to mitigate flooding. We're trying to learn the lessons from these storms and then put in place preventative mitigation measures so they don't overwhelm us again. And, but that does take time and money. Partly in the leadership of y'all, I understand where we're going, and that's what's going to happen. That's the direction we're moving as quickly as possible. The first step is to CC, the, the TV, the drainage lines, to get the damaged data recorded. It's very sophisticated now. It's not just the video, but there's, it's connected to data points, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, on the fourteenth, we'll have a contractor ready for your approval, and then they can start the fifteenth, to start CCTV and the lines, okay? So we're getting movement on that. You've got the reimbursement set up for that money, so we'll be recovering it through FEMA. The data in CCTV will then be used for the bigger FEMA reimbursement beyond, through the disaster mitigation grant. Not just the actual damage from this storm, but how to improve the system. We did ask for two-point-six million, and then we'll have the data to support that. Tom Z, Mr. Z, Mr. Zelenic, I should say. The data will be used. That data can then be also used along with that stormwater report to pursue these grants. So now we've got, we'll have multiple data points to submit for these grants. Actual video, a map. If that's what grantors love to see, that's what gets funded. Okay? So we're on the way in recovery, is the point of this. And we're gonna come out of this stronger than we were incurring damage at the outset. Overlay district update. The draft standards are completed. There's a meeting on November nineteenth with county and Mr. McLeod. Reminder, the overlay standards preserve North Howe corridor's unique character, addressing dimensional requirements such as height setbacks, outdoor advertising, mixed-use projects, building design features, and traffic. So that is underway. We'll have that meeting on the nineteenth, okay? Legislative agenda, please submit your requests to the clerk. We had something come up tonight. I wrote down that needs to go on the agenda. But please submit your requests so we can finalize this list at the next meeting and get it on up to the state. Okay? Comprehensive plan update. Steward consultants are finalizing the implementations, strategies, and preparing a draft plan that will be available for your review soon. You spoke into them just recently, I believe. Congress call it too. Yep. So that's moving along. The Old Courthouse, the abatement work is progressing on schedule, with the expected completion by early December. So that building will be rehabilitated, and it's underway. Strategic goals overview. I've proposed to submit for your review on the fourteenth with all these things we're working on, a big-picture overview of the recommended strategic goals, beginning with what you adopted last February. I'll start with that, and then what I've heard in my three and a half now, four months here, and I'll, I'll build upon that, and I'll have that ready for you at the retreat. I wanna make sure we're looking at everything from a high-level strategic plan as we move into execution and implementation, that we're not missing the very big picture and thinking long-term and strategically in everything we do. It's easy to get caught up in the day-to-day fires and storms and things and not look to the long term. That's where real progress occurs, in my opinion. We'll have that available to discuss at the retreat, along with your goals that we can then build upon. Shoreline stabilization project update. Our engineer is speaking now with the property owners on the benefits and scope. I hear the mayor's frustration with the easements, but we're moving those faster, and they'll be on, on the agenda for the fourteenth. Okay? For the easements. All right? The actual language. FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I just want to reiterate, there, the requests are out to the department heads. They went out in October. We're gonna start this process much earlier we did so that we, meanwhile, finance is working on this long-term model that we can then input to operate any capital requests and get a, understanding by the retreat. Mr. Flint will present you a, a long-term cash flow model showing where all the operating costs are input into the model at the retreat. So you'll know where we stand at that point. Then we can make coordinated decisions as we move forward. I've set up four scheduled budget workshops to make sure we have ample time, and the target is to complete this. Have a real, submit a preliminary draft budget by March and have it done by April thirty, okay? Finally, the coyote opening, grand opening. So wonderful to hear, a real asset to the community. There will be a walkthrough tomorrow at eleven, and the grand opening is Friday at eleven. Thank you.
I have two fellow questions, that'll just be part of my mayor's comments. And then the legislative agenda, could Noah send us what you have already? Send all of us what we have already? Or you need a date, otherwise?
I'll send it out this afternoon. If you have any additional from that, let me know, and I'll have it on your fourteenth agenda for finalization.
So that's, that's, that's the goal. Comprehensive plan. The draft plan will be available to the board soon. Soon being?
I will have a meeting this afternoon. We were supposed to meet last evening, it didn't work, and then the eleven o'clock got pushed to two.
You just had the manager follow up and tell us when the soon would be?
Hopefully it'll be by the fourteen.
I'm hoping.
Yeah, we'll try, we'll shoot for fourteen.
Okay. I had a whole bunch of stuff written here, but I'm only gonna talk about one of them. And that is just to prep everybody, tell everybody in this room except one, city official. And that is, in the coming year, as we start in January with our budget discussions, we will have to come up with an additional approximately a million dollars that we didn't have to spend this year. And so we have to figure out where that one is coming from. We got seven-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars that's due for the dredging. We have a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to replace the water sewer funds that pay for salaries, that we'll have to do that for, forever and ever. Then we have COLA and merit pay increases for everybody. So we're, we're certainly in the million-dollar category by that time. And I just want to make sure that, for the record, we're gonna have to be, like, making some decisions on finances for the coming year. And that's for big projects, little projects. People coming before us with all good ideas, but there's just X amount of dollars in the budget. And that's it. So Alderman Mosteller, do you have anything to say?
I just want to thank staff for all this research and bringing all this forward. It's awesome.
Alderman Carroll? Alderman Davis?
This question is actually for the city manager. Under number eight, you have finance will place the data in a long-term cash forecasting model. What I'm hoping we will have is a, as closest and precise as possible view of what new builds, new built homes, any kind of structures that will be added into our tax base so that we're not just assuming that we're, we don't start with last year's tax base, that we have a good idea of what's coming. I mean, heartbreaking as it is, I drive through Austria Landing about once a month, sometimes once every three weeks. And I believe I've counted now, I think it's twenty-seven houses are not just built, but occupied. And they've got a lot more to go, but they're, they're moving right along now. And we would be able to anticipate the amount of taxes that those will add in. And that'll make a difference in how much we end up taxing. So this will be a new thing for us, if we can do that.
Yes, ma'am. The, the idea for the model is to be forward-thinking about what we anticipate revenues coming in. So we're not just looking at this fiscal year. All right, I hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly?
I just want to thank the fire department and the police for a fabulous showing for Halloween for our community. I think that the fire department always does a great job of retreat there, and I think that everyone looks forward to that every year. And then also, while my family was out in the neighborhoods, it was really great to see our police riding slowly through the neighborhoods, and actually, some of them were playing thriller for us, which is kind of a cool thing to have happen. So I think that was a really great community outreach that we saw happening on Halloween.
Alderman Spencer?
Yes, sir. I wasn't able to come up with a cool costume like Alderman Carroll and all the others.
You came as a politician.
I came as a politician.
And I put my hand in my wallet.
Yes, sir. So I'm kind of quick. I know Alderman Kelly needs to get out of here and, and live life. First, we want to show great respect to Ms. Peggy Campbell, who was a friend of mine. I didn't know who she was. I just know she, she was Peggy Campbell. And as far as I've been with her, she was my mother's bridge partner. And that's what I took her as, nothing more, nothing less. And very kind to me over the years and sort of learned from her. But she passed away recently. She's done a lot for our community, and I want to note that. I try to remember those people that got us in these places. This is a late thing, but I have to follow through. Mayor Rich Alt, you have shown great friendship and leadership for me. When my home, when my home was flooded, I got a phone call every day practically with an offer from the mayor to come over and clean my house. And I don't think you're gonna get that very often. So I really appreciate your friendship. You have also empowered me that even though my ideas are crazy, go ahead and say it, Mark. We'll deal with them. Try to keep down the pedal. And I appreciate that. So, so I, I think that you are one of the greatest moves we've ever had because you are willing to listen. And that's very hard when you're in that spot, to, to take other people's and, and run with it. So finally, I want to talk about our voters, our voting board of elections. These are highly skilled, hard-working individuals. All these precinct chairmen, they're out at the voting centers and all. We need to show great respect to them because they are the back voter by voting. And, and, and this idea that politic, uh, elections are crooked is just because people don't like the result. And then with that said, no matter what the result is tomorrow night, it doesn't matter for Southport, I'm gonna promise you that. They care nothing about us. We're on our own. You've got to realize that. We don't know them. They don't know us. All politics is local. Put your hopes, and I know that's taken a straight with me at the table, but trust your local leaders because this is where we're really doing the work of the people. And finally, leaders are not perfect. I know I am not perfect. So if we attack the imperfect, we'll never have a leader, ever. So God bless Southport, and God bless the United States.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Lake?
Oliver Spencer has just shot the hell out of my expectations about everything.
We got a motion.
So I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Second, and, uh, motion and second, any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Continue your answers. Close session.